After many long Many women wait. Many women.
I just had a light lunch.
Many, many women just.
Cameras on, cameras on. Yeah, how do we do that?
Nancy, did you say I was still?
Do you have an outfit? I mean, how we do the thing?
You're locked, you're locked.
Okay, so. I'm charged on all sorts of things. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the December 1st zoning board of appeals meeting. We are here today to hear Loudoun County and City of Loudoun cases. We'll call the cases by case number and case name as they are on the agenda. The way that it works is the staff will give a presentation about the case and the board may have questions that they'll ask the staff. When we're satisfied with the information that we got from the staff, then we'll have the applicant come and talk to us about why they want to have this variance. And when they're complete, there may be some questions for them. And then I'll see if there's anybody else in here who wants to add any information. Then we'll ask for people who might be in opposition to the variance and we might have some questions for them. In general, the board renders a decision today, but it is possible that they can, that the board can vote to table an item and ask you to come back in a month or two months if there's something that needs to still be worked out. But in general, we do make a decision today. While you're presenting, if somebody's already presented something, you don't need to say that thing again. People up here, they're pretty good at those things most of the time. Our first case today is VAR 2015-14 James T. Creasy, Carter E. Dry, Teihira.
Good afternoon. I hope everyone had a good holiday. Our first case before you today is a case by Roger Meeks representing Coffey Construction Company. They're representing the property owner's Creasy. He's requesting to replace an existing accessory building with another. What makes this request special is that we're dealing with a illegally established non-conforming use. Property went through the special exception process to be established for self-communications power with the adoption of the ULDC, the zoning was changed, which made property legal but not. And in this case, there's an existing accessory building that measures eight by twelve, and they want to replace that building with a nine by sixteen. It's going to be a great improvement to house all the equipment that goes along with the cell tower. Staff look at this, it's an area that's rural residential in nature. We can see a problem with replacing an accessory building with another. And we were given approval.
Are there any questions for Carolyn? Thank you very much. Is there anyone here from the applicant that would like to give us more information? Is there anyone here who is in opposition to this variance? Was there any feedback to your office, Carolyn?
No.
Is there any discussion? Have you ever taken a motion?
Chairman, I would like to offer motion to approve this variance, sign D.
You have a motion from Dr. Housewell signing D. There's a second. Does he have a next second? On the paper? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Our next case is VAR 2015-15 Clifford Lucas, Arnie Lucas, Lawrence Lucas, doing business at Lucas Brothers Memorial Garden. Come on.
The applicant seek to relieve supplemental standards for the establishment of a commercial cemetery. The property is currently used as a family cemetery and has been for several years. The RA zoning does allow cemeteries, there's no rezoning required. However, there are standards you have to meet in order to establish a commercial cemetery. And there are four standards, that's one of you all's page two and three, that they can't seem to meet. And I'll go over these one by one. The first is the standard for access. The code requires all cemeteries shall be provided from an arterial collector or state highway. In this case, which reaches the road is classified on the thoroughfare plan as a local road. However, it is built to a collector standard, it's an eighty-foot right-of-way. And typically, your local roads are sixty feet or less. But the road is wide enough to handle the traffic. So staff didn't see any reason to deny the board to use existing roads towards their access. The second standard is the minimum land area. We require cemeteries to have a minimum of ten acres. In this case, applicant has five acres. We talked amongst ourselves as to ten acres, why was that a requirement? And that's something that was suggested when the ULDC was adopted. And the thing we can find is that the state, the state of Georgia, requires perpetual care cemetery to be a minimum of ten acres. For that, staff, you know, reasoning of while we adopted that in our local property. But applicant does have five acres. We just couldn't find anything reasonable that would not support the establishment of a cemetery on five acres. There are some in the county that sits on less than ten acres, not many. But there is some, and there hasn't been anything that really caused a problem with those six acres. The third standard is that of minimum road frontage. We require the lot for cemeteries to have a minimum road frontage of two hundred feet. When the applicants began this process, the lot had only sixty feet of frontage. But one of the applicant's home property nearby was able to do some land swapping. So now they have a total of a hundred and fifty feet of road frontage. So they're still lacking fifty feet. Staff felt that was adequate enough to handle the ingress, egress of the traffic or the concessions that would come to and from the cemetery. And then lastly, the standard requires that you provide for a buffer yard. Whenever you have a commercial use that is adjacent to residential zone property or agricultural property, the code requires that you provide a thirty-foot vegetative buffer around the boundary of property. The applicant in this case is proposing a fifteen-foot buffer. The staff had some concerns with that and thought that buffer need to be increased to at least twenty feet. Because the setback requirements, when buildings that go along with the cemetery has to be twenty feet from the sidewalk line. So we thought twenty feet was adequate enough. And within that twenty feet, they have to plant so many trees, so many shrubs, every one hundred meter. So with all the variances that they are requesting, staff is recommending for all accept the buffer requirement. And we are recommending a twenty-foot buffer and you will have fifteen-foot requested buffer. We have found that we're getting more and more requests of cemeteries. It's something that the county really hadn't had to deal with because it was, you know, it was already done with Sunset Hill being there and Brumview already being established. So we're finding more and more private property owners establishing cemeteries. So this, there's really nothing for us to compare, you know, our frozen comments with. I looked at our standard, I found a couple of pieces of properties where it met all of those standards. And it's, it's, it's an area that's rural in nature. And we, staff just feels that as long as the cemetery doesn't go through a residential subdivision or suburban area, you know, there probably wouldn't be a problem. But there's been some issues raised from the adjacent property owners, which is quite understandable, that this is a dead-end road. Typically, your collector and your arterial road system, you know, gathers traffic to dump them out on major thoroughfares. Well, this road, while it is built as an eighty-foot right-of-way, it is a dead-end road. But that's, that's something we just have to weigh, weigh in and see how it works. But with that, staff has recommended approval. Do you have any more candidates answering the questions?
Is there anyone here that is in opposition?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, at each of your stations, I received two correspondence via email of opposition from nearby property owners.
I have a question about the road system. Some of these properties, as you drive in that road, are larger apartments. And so could they turn into someday subdivisions of five acres? And that would then turn this road from being a local road into being a collector road? Because a subdivision would then come out of one of these larger tracks onto this road.
It's possible, the RA zoning, which most of that property has a zoning, does require lots to be a minimum of two and a half acres. There is some R1 zoning in the area, which requires lots to be a minimum of one acre. I think it would be a challenge for someone to get R1 zoning, but not a possibility. I presume shrink the things happening. So, but yes, you're absolutely right. If they were to take one of those larger tracks, change the zoning, if they were successfully changing the zoning.
Well, or combining, buying up some of those and then turning it into two and a half acre lots. You could make a subdivision with two and a half acre lots.
Yes.
Okay. And they have another question about this touches the Bay Branch? Is it New Orleans?
Yes, the southern portion of the property does touch the wetlands, but they are not interested in developing the southern portion, just the northern portion.
So that yellow outline is five acres. The top part where it's laid out for the cemetery is about two and a half?
About two and a half, it would be fair to say about two and a half.
And, and what? If the cemetery were established, they could use the whole five acres for the cemetery as a section? Even down into that wetland to cover?
Well, no, some of the standards talk about, you know, the rock cannot go into any of the wetlands. I mean, there is a setback distance that rocks have to be from any type of wetlands.
How far would that be, the setback?
It says cemetery should not be located in a wetland, hundred-foot flood line, floodway, or flood hazard area. So there is no established setback, just can't go in.
So basically, the requirement by the state and the ULDC is a ten-acre minimum.
Ten-acre minimum.
And they really don't have five. They've really got two and a half to work with.
Yes, they're developing two and a half.
So we're talking about a seven and a half when you cut down to a seven and a half acre variance.
Yes.
And does the Bay Branch flow out of what used to be the Nelson Hills water?
I'm not sure. Nelson Hills is south and west of this property. I'm, I'm not real sure. I can see, on the map, I can see where it connects.
And then one more question about, in the 2009 flood, how far did the water come on this property, do you know?
Is there a requirement that there's, that there be a fence around this property?
No requirements for fences. However, if they were to construct a six-foot, six to eight-foot, okay, fence, they could reduce their buffer some. But there's no requirement for fences.
Okay, got your question. On the frontage, they had sixty feet and you said they had acquired ninety. Has that been acquired through a D?
Through a D and a flat. As a matter of fact, we're reviewing the survey flat map.
There's a part of it, at least, that is fenced down there right now.
Yes.
That portion that's fenced seems like it, just in, in looking to the left corner down there, if it was gated inside and try to see if I could go in. But that drops off substantially. Is that portion here that narrows on on this flat, is, is that where the fence right here?
The applicants are here, they can probably answer that. I didn't walk the property.
Because I'm wondering if there's no access at all, not just down here to the tip that they couldn't get in, but that it's all wet all the way. As, as far as that look like it dropped?
I'm not sure, Ms. Trina. The applicants aren't working there.
Okay.
Do we know how many, based on the usable land, how many graves you can get out of the remainder of the land? This is kind of neat for me.
No, but on their site plan, this part of your packet, they, they are proposing twelve hundred. Twelve hundred just on that upper, that northern portion. And that's not to include the southern part of the property where you could possibly develop more graves. It could be a condition of approval that, you know, the development is tied to the site plan. Cemeteries are very new for us. But that's indeed a condition of approval. Yes, sir.
The infrastructure in the cemetery itself, are any of the regulations of this developed?
We do regulate, if you're proposing any wells, home property, a lot has to be so many feet from that drinking well. From our conversation with the applicants, they're not proposing any buildings, any wells, septic tanks, none of that.
Roads?
Roads, yes, they are proposing. There's an existing road now, which it has to be improved some. The county will accept gravel, you know, crushed asphalt. The road would have to be improved some.
Any other questions for Carolyn?
This started out as a family cemetery. Are these the three, the three applicants, are they the three owners of the land?
According to the D, they are the three owners. And I, you know, don't know what type of covenant or agreement that was made that this would be a family cemetery, but I'm sure people that are here can probably shed some light to that question.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Carolyn.
My, my concern is regarding the settling dynamics of this case. And then the heat of the mines prior to the planning commission meeting concerning this case?
Well, there was no planning commission meeting. We did meet with the applicants.
Both sides?
No, just the owners, the current owners of the property.
Were there any knowledge at that time that connect that to your opposition to this case?
I raised that question to the applicants and at that time, they didn't seem to think there would be any opposition to moving forward with this. And it wasn't until the last two or three days that we start receiving phone calls.
In addition to these two letters that are here?
That's correct.
There were also phone calls. From other people or from the?
From nearby, nearby property owners.
Or from nearby property owners.
Now, are all the property owners family owners?
There's a lot of family out there. There's a lot, Lucas, Richardson, Rhodes, the Richardson family and the Lucas family. They own just about all of that property.
So there were family comes and not anymore comes?
I would say, yes.
Is there, is there a question regarding ownership?
No.
Like standing or like, you know, whether or not somebody's actually going to file lawsuit to enjoy, you know, quiet title? I mean, to join somebody from developing the property?
Actually, one of the phone calls I received today, actually, and they may have requested that in the email, is to request the board to table so they can get legal counsel. I don't know how serious that was. But I told them, you know, they didn't ask the board to table, but it wasn't a guarantee. The board, the board felt they didn't have enough information to make a decision that they could table the request. So I don't, they mentioned legal counsel, I didn't know what that really meant.
Are they here today?
Um, no.
So the people in opposition don't want to stop this? They're not, they're not even here?
They're here, yes.
Okay.
Is there an average number of people that attend fumes that, that we know of?
No, I don't think you can, well, sorry, I can't. No, I, I don't think you can.
All right, any other questions for Carolyn that she might be able to answer?
I was just concerned about the, the number of cars that could fit inside this, this area while a funeral was going on. And there's really, I didn't see anything right of the way outside of the cemetery that cars apart safely.
From my experience, you know, I don't know how many grave side ceremonies you would actually have. But typically, you know, a cemetery is used just for burial, just to commit the body to the grave. I start, starting to get a little concerned, if you had three variances going on at the same time, you know, how would you be able to handle that? But the applicants, they have a good idea of how to handle that. But there is a requirement that none of that traffic can, can spread out onto the road quite, they cannot.
You said this is a dead-end road anyway, right?
It is.
Is there a coal cycle there? So they can turn it?
I don't think this is.
It's a long, it's a long road.
Going to cemetery, come on here, just be watching. Okay, any other questions for Carolyn? Thank you very much. Is the applicant here and would you like to come and give us a presentation, please? Please give us your name and your address for the record.
I'm Pastor Arnie Lucas. I live up at the 427 Vallette Road, Teihira, 31632. I pastor Church Jesus Christ by Faith Ministries on Vallette Road. And we have, not a large, but a small congregation. And we started this cemetery for the family. It was originally started by six brothers, I have, I have nine brothers. So we started the cemetery mainly for the family. But then some of the brothers passed on and now there's only three of us left. It's happened, we wait up. So we figured I belong to, I'm passing the church. So we need upkeep, the cemetery to be maintained. So we decided that maybe we could let members from the church be, some of their families be buried there with donations or whatever to take care of, keep up. Because right now, only me and my two brothers are having all the upkeep and cemeteries need to be kept up. And so we came to the conclusion that maybe we should let some members from the other churches or our church be buried there also. So we tried to go in, but we've been there now better part of ten years. And we have three, three family members, five family members buried there already. So, but we still have to keep up and maintain the cemetery. So we would be taking in other people with a small donation or whatever that would help keep up the cemetery. And we came to a conclusion that maybe we should get, go through the proper channels to make it legal and correct and whatever we have to do. But when we started, we didn't know about all the other details ten years ago. But now we want to try to get this done the best way that we can. And we would hope that you all will work with us on it and get the family to get this figured out. And, and most of the land owned through the Richardson Road belongs to my family. I would say seventy-five to eighty percent of all the land on that road belongs to my family, my brothers, my nieces, and my nephews.
I have a question, I have a question. Um, the cemetery, would it, uh, would it, would the public have access to it as well or just, or just church members?
Well, the public will have access.
Okay, so now it's just church members?
Well, because we don't have their community members.
I know what you did say, all the churches.
That's what it originally, that's what we started, just church members. But now that we're going through this, I'd say maybe it'd be better just to have open to the public with, you know, preparation. But this would be, this would be.
This is my name, Cliff Lucas. I'm Cliff Lucas, the youngest of the brothers, the last of the brothers.
And your address, sir?
Forty-seven sixty Vallette Road. Access, someone had, had some questions about access. That's, and as Ms. Raswell stated, that it's a road that is wide enough to accommodate traffic. The other thing is that it is a, a dead-end street. There's less traffic on that street because there's nowhere to go. Down on the state, there'll be a bridge across the river. And we own the property on the river where the road stopped. The other thing is, we were concerned about perpetuity. And even with a family cemetery, you know, we're gone, my children, you know, the, uh, I can't predict what they're gonna do, or my grandchildren. They're not gonna get out there and mow some grass, or maybe they won't want to spend the money. But if it's commercial, then that money will keep the cemetery looking viable and, and keep it up. It is a corporation and it's a family corporation. And that would be handed down to perpetuate, to the family members. So that's the reason, that's the main reason that we went, want to go commercial with the cemetery. I know some of the people might talk about opposition to it, but they have to think about long-term. How would it look if it's a cemetery that's grown up? Is that better than maybe wondering whether there's some criminal might be coming up to the graveyard? Certainly, people in the cemetery is not gonna rob anybody. And they're not gonna be traveling up and down the road. A cemetery, normally, there's only the people who are coming up to, at their last rites, to, to commit their people to the ground. So there's not a whole lot of people coming up there. We have a large family, as you mentioned, we have five people out there already. We have, and I've had ten, nine brothers and two sisters, well, four sisters. And that's a lot of family. So we never had a traffic problem. And I think one of the, we have one of the largest families in large family. So I don't think anyone will be coming up that's gonna clog up the road if that's a problem. As far as the minimum land area, she covered all that, but I just wanted to mention that, that part. I think that's certainly a perpetual issue because we want, we want a cemetery to be maintained. I know this, cemetery is here that they uncovered on St. Augustine Road that had grown up and, you know, nobody had taken care of it. So this, we're looking forward to it. And I think that's a good thing, and that should be a concern, not only to us as a family, but to Loudoun County as a whole.
Oh, we're gonna have questions. Come back. Oh, we're gonna have questions, come back.
You should have questions.
We have questions.
Okay.
I'm sure we have questions, and, and I'll go first.
Okay.
Um, the, how, in the two thousand and nine flood, how high did the water come on that property?
Not on the property at all.
So Bay Creek doesn't, the Bay branch doesn't come up there?
No, no. Not even there.
Not, not even on that point?
That little part, no. Well, just where the Bay branch is, it goes down to this. Yes. It, it doesn't come where you can see it, we've never seen it anywhere.
Okay, did it come up to the bins that stay?
No, no. I, I, I would say the Bay branch is about two to three hundred yards from there, um, and that's where it is.
It didn't come up. Um, Carmella has suggested instead of a fifteen foot buffer, that you put a twenty foot buffer. Would you be able to manage a twenty foot buffer instead of a fifteen?
We were there with her when they recommended that, and we agreed.
You're okay with that. And the cemetery, when I was out there, was locked. Will the cemetery be locked or open?
It will be open once, um, it's approved. It's open now, you can get in, uh, but you have to know that the lock on there is not locked.
All right, but in general, the cemetery would be open so that people could come and visit?
Exactly.
Visit the cemetery?
Exactly. Now, there's only family there, so we have a lock there, but the lock is not locked.
Okay, and it would be open or locked at night?
Open, uh, I would be open at night, unless there's a problem.
When was this cemetery established?
Twelve years ago. And a lot of these regulations wasn't even in place at that time.
And with all your family members, you just got that?
We don't die fast, thank you. My, my oldest sister is ninety-eight.
Well, didn't somebody say y'all had six brothers that had died, or three of y'all left, three brothers?
And the oldest one, he will be ninety in July, so I hope to make, make that happen.
How many, um, graves, um, property has it since now, covered without any expansion?
Without any expansion? I believe it's, I don't know the exact number, but it's around fifteen hundred.
I mean, how many can it accommodate without any other development?
That's what I'm saying.
Fifty hundred right now?
Exactly.
You can get to only areas within fifteen hundred spaces?
Exactly.
Right now?
Yes.
Do you have added parking space right now?
Right now, there's still parking. Yes. The lower part of the cemetery is where we use it for parking. And right now, some of it, the park, probably some of those, some of the plots, but if there's that many, the lower part of the cemetery is where we use it for parking.
Are there any brothers in opposition of this case at the moment, or nieces and nephew?
Some of my nieces, uh, and nephew is here, so that might be in opposition.
Does it have anything to do with any, I was asked once before, legal ramifications concerning the deeds?
Oh, no.
I mean, with off students?
Oh, no.
Carmella, did you say that, that the, um, plot or plot that had been given to you was to accommodate twelve hundred?
Four hundred, yes.
Okay, but, but?
I, I said the property, oh, yeah, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
So the LLC owns this, this land?
Yes.
Okay, and, and everybody that's, uh, that has shares in ownership of the LLC, just, just three brothers?
Yes. And I, I own the land around this cemetery.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here in support of this application? Is there anyone here in opposition to this application? And come to the lectern and give your name and address and tell us your point of view.
My name is Marie Lucas, my address is forty-nine Lucas Richardson Road.
That's the manager, I'm Ashanti Mayfield, and my address is thirty-five ten Lucas Richardson Road.
And your opposition is what? Now, just so you understand, this is not a rezoning, the cemetery already exists. This is so that it can meet standards, so that it can be a commercial cemetery, so that people outside of the family can be buried there. And the things that they're asking for relief are the size of the cemetery, so it's gonna be a little smaller, instead of ten acres, it's gonna be smaller. Um, the road frontage, which instead of two hundred feet of road frontage, they're gonna have a hundred and fifty. And the buffering, which instead of having thirty feet of buffer, they're gonna be asking for twenty. So those are the things that they're asking relief, so, okay.
Um, well, our issue is it becoming a commercial cemetery, because obviously it's been there ten years. We could be a family cemetery, we'll pay for that, and I'm not a member of the Lucas family. But my family does own over thirty acres of land out there. I'm the very last flat, um, at the end of the road. So my issue is that there are gonna be twelve hundred cemetery, twelve hundred graves there, um, possibly, the possibility of twelve hundred graves. Um, when there are funerals, that means that people are gonna have to come, because there's nowhere to turn around on the road easily. So if they're coming all the way down to my end of the road, that means they're gonna have to use my land to turn around on, because obviously there's not a cul-de-sac. Um, and that's just unwanted traffic for our neighborhood. I would prefer for, just to say, a family, a family cemetery for the few family members that they have that do bury out there. Because there are numerous Lucases that have no desire to be buried in that cemetery, that have died in the past ten years, that are not buried there.
Yes, I agree with Ashanti. Um, our area is rural area, it's quiet, we have children out there, we have elderly people out there. Our most concerned is the traffic that's gonna accumulate out there. And it's my grand, uh, property that I'm down. And you're gonna have people out there that's gonna view our homes and see that our homes are isolated, and this will be caused crime. I see that my uncle made a joke about, you know, people robbing graves, you know, because I said something about that. Because it's gonna bring crime out there, and, well, people will see that our homes are isolated, you know, because we work all the time. They will see that there is no neighbors there, so it's gonna be a potential crime that they're gonna try and do, and breaking our homes.
And might I add that neither one of the gentlemen that are trying to make the cemetery live on the road?
Neither can live on our road. My father is deceased, and I'm sleeping in the house, you know, my father's not there, not there. I worked three jobs to get my home, you know, out there on land that my father paid me. And I don't want, you know, someone breaking my home, because I'm single, and I work all the time. And people are gonna see that there's somebody, you know, this area we were breaking. Right now, you know, people are coming to city and see, you know, that this area is rural, is quiet, you know, there's not very much traffic out there. And, you know, going today, we're working, and there's people out there, and that's all they do is just ride around and try to find places they can break into. And we don't want that. I'm fine with being a family cemetery. I'm fine with that, I have no issue with that. But we don't want the unwanted traffic and the unwanted crime out there.
Are there any questions for these speakers?
I have one question. I, I'm only just curious to know, um, I mean, who did you guys talk to about the devaluation of the land if a cemetery was there? Like, did someone, I'm saying, did someone tell you that, or did you just, did y'all just come to that to close?
We? Um, sadly, we just found this out Sunday night. We know you're in the house for Sunday night. I, um, have a petition where people on the street side, and I have, uh, two brothers that don't live here, that send emails.
Can you give that petition to Carmella, and she'll take care of that one?
And as far as the property value is concerned, um, as I said before, my family has quite a bit of land at the end of the road. And there was someone that was interested in purchasing land, um, out there on our road. Um, and he said to me, well, you don't have a cemetery. So just with that statement, he changed his mind and went and purchased land on Skid Ridge Road. So that's with it being a family cemetery and only having five graves. So imagine what would happen if there are twelve hundred graves on the property, we ever decide we wanna sell a portion of our land.
Was it not clear that twelve hundred graves can also be allowed there at this moment? I mean, twelve hundred families, somehow, we're waiting perhaps, just to expand or expand, and then additional individuals may want to be buried there, or they're checking. Nothing, there's nothing that's stopping them from burying twelve hundred people in there.
But if this is not, if this is floor, does that mean that they cannot sell plots to people?
I have a last year, because I don't know the contracts, so now for family members, perhaps any family members have to pay something.
My name is Willie Flowers, my address is, um, we have property at thirty-seven ten Lucas Richardson Road. Also, I have property on Dollar Road, which is across the street from Lucas Richardson Road. If, I just have one question before I get started, is it okay if I ask a question? Okay. Is it possible for Mr. Russell to point out where they're talking about the cemetery? I believe I know where it's located, but as far as on the platte, the location with the cemetery, with it?
The yellow, the, what's our line in yellow?
Okay, all right. May I approach the platte over there? These two, that's where we own property at, on Lucas Richardson Road. I married into a family, um, I married one of their brother's daughters, the oldest daughter. And if this is the cemetery right here, you're talking about twelve hundred. And I, I, I'm not in opposition of it being a family cemetery, but when you're talking about opening up to the public, you're talking about twelve hundred bodies. And I don't know how it is in the Caucasian race, but I know in the African-American race, uh, the final rites is very important to us, very important. And, I mean, there could possibly be fifty or sixty cars coming in for a funeral at the last rites. The gate, they only have one open going into that cemetery, one open. And from hearing you all talk, they can't park on the right of way, all right? So they do have a concrete, is in any way possible, Mr. Russell, for you to bring up the picture of the, the actual cemetery itself? The, the pictures of the cemetery? This is the only opening leading into the cemetery. They do have concrete, all right, so I assume wherever the body's gonna be, they're gonna either, either park on this concrete or on the side, since they cannot park on the right of way. And the only thing I'm asking, like I said, I don't, I don't have a problem with it being a family cemetery, but I just hope that y'all stick with the, the code as far as it being a cemetery.
Well, that, that's exactly what we're discussing today. In order to be a commercial cemetery, it has to meet certain standards.
Yes.
There are some things that it doesn't meet, and we're trying to decide whether we can meet those and have it be a safe place for people to happily leave their loved ones.
Yes, and also, uh, can you go back to where the platte's from? Yellow, yes, this, okay. From my understanding, uh, I, I believe you had asked a question about what happens if there's a subdivision developed in, in, in this area? From my understanding, there is some talk of the, the, the children of the Lucas family that own these plaits right here are thinking about selling these plaits and trying to get it developed into a subdivision. So it's a possibility that these plaits right here that are owned by Lucas children, they could come together and sell this to a developer and see about a subdivision in there.
That's true, the reason I asked that question was about the categorization of the road. Right now, it's categorized as a local road. Should there ever be any other road connected to that road that would become a collector? And then it would not need relief from being a butcher road, because it would be a collector road. And the thing, again, that we're trying to decide today is, should they be granted relief on the buffering, on the, um, roadway frontage, and on the minimum acreage? Now, Carmella, I have a question for you. Um, the two hundred feet of road frontage, um, could we make as a condition that they have two entries? Uh, in that two hundred, hundred and fifty feet, that they would have that two entrances?
In condition for the necessary.
Apply conditions if we wanted to.
And that, and that's my only concern, uh, as far as it being a, a family cemetery. But low standards to comply and be talking about twelve hundred, I mean, burial.
And you're, you're saying that a typical summit, a typical burial, lairmart and fifty, fifty cars with two people each?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, um, we, I've been to burials and everything. Uh, my father is, uh, is a pastor of a church, the All Nations Delivery Center, seven oh seven Ward Street. And we have funerals in our church pretty regularly. And the fall, the, the, the hurrican, with everyone falling behind out there?
The little homes as well.
And, and the little homes as well. I mean, it's very easy on a, on a, a, a pretty good decent person. All right, it's pretty well known in the city of, of Austin, to have thirty or forty cars out of bare minimums coming to a funeral and everything.
Mr. Flowers, I, I wanted to clarify something. I'm the one who said that they couldn't park on the right of way. And as a legal point, I don't know that it is illegal for them to park on the right of way. I said that based on driving out there, and I do not feel like there was room for them to be there. So I, I just want you to understand.
I understand.
That, that was probably, I, I spoke out of turn in the words that I used. I should have said that there didn't seem to be room to, because I don't know for sure legally they can.
And, and, and like I said, as far as it being a family cemetery, I don't have no opposition, but I, I'm, I'm praying that y'all would uphold the standards, um, for them to open up this commercially. From me hearing them, I'm hearing them talk like they need to open this up so they can bring maintenance to the cemetery. All right, um, to me, that's a poor reason to change a family cemetery and open it up to the public for finances to keep it maintained. That's a very poor reason to do that there, all right? Also, at, at the end of this road here, I mean, there's no turnaround at the end of Lucas Richardson.
They're gonna come into the cemetery, go, and they're gonna turn, turn, come, pull into the cemetery, come to the burial, and then they're gonna go out that same entrance that they came in.
How would they turn around?
They're, they're gonna drive on a loop road, just in that road, there's a loop inside of the cemetery. So they can drive in, it's a one-way road, comes in like this, they're gonna pull all the way in, and then they're gonna pull back out and make a left-hand turn. Do we have any other questions for this, these speakers?
I have one for Carmella. Um, okay, so if they, if they, let's say they met all the requirements, there's nothing stopping them from making a commercial graveyard.
So if they, oh. Oh, I do the white, oh, wow. Mr. Lucas, you own all of the property that surrounds this cemetery?
Yes.
You could make the cemetery be ten acres?
I could.
You could, and you could give the cemetery two hundred feet of frontage?
Probably could, I don't, I don't know.
If he may say that to a guy who's going to be rich though?
I don't know what piece of property he owns, um, that doesn't matter. So now to you in opposition. Mr. Lucas seems to be holding a lot of cards in his hand, because he's asking for relief on a smaller piece of property. Mr. Lucas seems to be holding a lot of cards in his hand because he's asking for relief on a smaller piece of property. The three things he asks for are size of the property, buffering, and the access. But he can make all of those things be bigger and meet the standard exactly, and then we wouldn't be here at all.
Right.
And then he could by right make a commercial cemetery because he would have met all of the standards. Is that correct, Carmella?
With the exception of access, because Lucas Richardson Road is still.
But it, but you said it's built to the correct standard?
It's built to collector's.
Standard. And we have seen local roads, the road I live on used to be a local road, and when it was built at the standard, that changed to collector, even though it doesn't go anywhere. I also live on a road that doesn't go anywhere, but it is a collector road. Uh, okay. Does that clarify? We, we, we know that we don't want to have a commercial cemetery in our neighborhood. And the traffic on a rural road, fifty cars, when I was driving out there, I was like, whoa, this would be a long cemetery procession to go down this road. I can understand that point. But the things that we're deciding today are, can it be smaller than the allotted? Can the buffering be different? Can they have a little bit less access? Are there any other questions?
Can I ask the board one question if you have?
Uh, go ahead.
Um, and I, and I, I don't know.
We might not answer.
I understand, but is it known, I think that the gentleman there asked a question, having a cemetery without load of the property or would that have any effect on the property?
We have no idea about that. Outside of our program, the taxes also return. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Are there any other questions?
Is this already in effect, these roads? Because I didn't see that when I went out there.
Not all the way, just paved area, you see, probably just to the circle.
So there's gonna have to be a clearing of woods?
No, it's all clear.
It's, it's all clear.
But there, I mean, that site plan is, again, a work in progress, that's something conceptual. Um, they would have to present something to us, um, that we can use or file.
Do you have something to add, then?
No, other than it, it is clear, property is clear.
That's the survey.
And the parking, I would like to add one thing, the parking.
Come to the, come to the lecture and then give us your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Rodney Kettering, one oh seven East North Street, El Nosa. And the, uh, the issue about the parking, uh, when I did that preliminary drawing, the roads were laid out in, uh, with a width wide, with a parallel park on one side and drive around with a one-way drive all the way in, circle in, circle out.
So would they like to send that here?
This angle.
And still come make the twelve hundred plots?
Yes.
And still not being the, the that list?
That's correct.
Any other questions? Any discussion? Would anyone like to make a motion? Can, can we, um, privately discuss? Is there any way for us to confer? We have questions, more questions.
Is, is there a way for us to huddle? Because like I can't hear.
As long as you keep your conversation sold that everybody can, can hear that, it's best to be safe.
Okay, so some of the concerns that we have are the parking, the access, um, that there would be two entrances, that, that, there's that nice paved place, but if we're gonna have a wider amount, that we have two paved places. We come in, we go around the circle, and we come out. So the entry's only, exit only, so people aren't trying to go through that one little gate in both directions.
Would it be helpful if the board, if they so desire to table it, have the applicants go back to the drawing board and present something that's more presentable?
Um, and, and then the other thing was the number of graves, there's been some concern about twelve hundred graves, um.
I want to direct that traffic that's going to be out there. There's, I mean, that, that is a rural area. People are out there, they, they, they are living there. It's family land passed down to them, but they are still choosing to be on that land in that little area. It's got fifty cars. I mean, I don't know how much of a regular basis, you know, that they'll be traveling, I mean, traveling in and out of that.
Well, homeowners up there have a valid point, because there are people that wanna be, uh, traveling that area, wanna, I travel that area. I don't live on that street, so I'm concerned about the person who lives on that street.
The only thing I see is that if they came here today and met every requirement, every requirement, that there's nothing we could say.
Right. Right.
With the exception of access.
With there's, with, with, and it, okay, so access still prevents them? Because it is categorized as a local road? Should sometime in the future, if you re-categorize in the thoroughfare plan, then nothing would prevent them?
That's correct.
So it would just be a matter of time waiting and Mr. Lucas making his property bigger, the cemetery property bigger.
And the way I understand from the county engineer is that because of the funding that was used to improve that road, um, had something to do with the funding? Because my question is, why is it so big? Why is the right of way so big? You know, that's not typical for your rural area. And it had something to do with the funding they received from the state?
Can I ask a question? What qualifies it and pushes it over to a commercial cemetery? What is the qualifying?
When you start to invite the public, there are some exemptions from the states. Church cemeteries, family cemeteries, and there's one, one or two others that, you know, the state exempts them from rules. Um, but in this case, a commercial cemetery, anything outside of a family.
What qualifies a family?
So there's questions to call?
Because, I mean, I know of family cemeteries that have very close family friends that are buried on the family cemeteries. I also know, I mean, and I guess my question is, if a plot, I can see that if a plot in a cemetery is sold specifically for money to be brought into a corporation that owned the piece of property, that that would qualify as a commercial cemetery. But, uh, if a donation is given on behalf or even if just permission is given for a family friend or something like that to be buried on a family cemetery, I, my question would be, does that disqualify from no longer being a family cemetery to somehow now being a commercial cemetery? I wouldn't think so. I mean, but I don't know, and that's, that's my concern here is, technically, it seems to me that if it's a family cemetery and the people that are in control of giving permission of who can be buried there and who can't, if they give permission to whoever they want to be buried there, they can do it.
I don't know if that just qualifies or defines family. We don't, we don't, we do not define family.
So, so technically, it would seem to me that they could, the people in control of the cemetery could let anyone be buried there if they wanted to.
Good question. Because, I mean, I'm not checking IDs, I, we don't have, we do that. No, you know, we, we will trust that they can do the right thing. And if someone calls the question, then we have no other choice but to open the case on it.
Right.
Hey, does the board wanna table and wait till another week? Uh, that our next meeting would be?
I believe it's January fifteenth.
Uh, actually, we have the schedule right here, yes, January fifth, um.
Madam Chairman, I would like to entertain that we table this issue because, um, something came up as far as the opposition. We were not aware of this, and I do believe that the family need to have a discussion, and I do believe that more concessions can take place before I can truly act on this as a motion to approve or disapprove. So that's my motion, is to table this until next month.
And, and I second the motion because, um, I agree, I agree as well, and I believe the next time when we come here, um, just everybody's gonna come with just loaded information, everybody in opposing and everybody proposing. Everybody just should be here then, just to make a decision then.
Alright, we have a motion by Dr. Housel and a second by Mr. Hogan. All in favor of tabling this until next month, big hand. There we go.
Madam Chairman, is there anything you all need to bring, see you all, that you don't have?
Information that is of certain interest and could possibly do that.
Parking, did I say parking? And what conditions are they currently allowed to let people be buried there?
And, and they also now have heard the concerns of those in opposition. Um, they need to be prepared in some way to address those concerns. And maybe they wanna do that by having a little family huddle at home and, and address those concerns at home. Uh, then tell, tell us how y'all made up.
I, I would be interested to know, opposition-wise, where these people are located along the road. If, who, who all sign, I'm just, not necessarily that you can provide that, but if opposition is coming back next time, I, you know, and they could somehow give us a little bit more information about where along the road these people are, that would, that would help us and give some weight, give some weight to that information.
The other thing I have too is if, if you live at the start of that road and you don't drive all the way down, you maybe didn't see the sign and know that, um, cemetery sections were going to be coming past your house, um, unless you drove all the way down the road to the cemetery to see the sign. Um, so I know that adjacent landowners are notified, but the ones at the top of the road, um, maybe didn't have sufficient time because they didn't see the sign.
Well, we got, we got, we got a good enough sentence here, so I mean, I just.
So we will see you next month, um, again. Same time, two thirty, January the fifth. Okay, now our next case is, I'm counting cases, V and R twenty.
Excuse me, do you all, do you all listen back?
Twenty fifteen dash sixteen, the city of El Nosa, why is the city of El Nosa under the counter?
We're requesting the board to table this request. There was an added variance. Yes, there was an added variance to this, one variance, um, and we need to re-advertise and run it back through the, the cycle. So we're requesting you all to table it. There were two variants that they requested.
Could someone make that motion, please?
I'm awaiting the motion to table.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Did you get that, Tracy?
Let's see. Make the motion, Mr. Howard, wait a second.
No, oh, okay. Okay, thank you all very much, thank you very much. Okay, so, our final case of the day, City of El Nosa case A P P, twenty fifteen oh nine Snake Nation Press, one ten Forest Street. Um, by the way, there's not a sign up on.
Forest.
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 Forest. We have four.
I'll get a sign.
Four, I, I drove around the block today. Forest Street? Forest, forest, forest.
F O R C E.
I drove around your property today, I did not see.
It must have been on East Forest.
Yeah, it was on West, on Two.
I, I got pictures of it.
I know there were.
There's four signs out there today.
Okay.
Three-foot sign.
I was gonna say, because I saw y'all, I saw the planning commission.
I've got a stuff going on over there. Yeah, we got lots of, uh.
I was gonna say.
Okay, there weren't. Okay.
They're a pair.
Tracy?
Yes, ma'am.
Please, please say.
Thank you. This case is from Snake Nation Press. It's a multifaceted request. Um, they are requesting a variance to Val D R section twenty-eight, two eighteen dash twenty-three, letter J, as it relates to setbacks for telling the media station tower in Atlanta. Property is located at one ten West Forest Street. Consists of about a third of acre, is an unprecedented professional, and is also a local historic district. The property owners, Snake Nation Press, are proposing to renovate the house. It's a single-family house currently, as you can see the picture. To include a professional organization slash media space, as well as a radio broadcasting studio, which include an about fifty-nine foot antenna, and will include the owner's private residence as well. When I said this request is very multifaceted, they have, here's number two, uh, several areas. The first was March of twenty fifteen in front of the local historic preservation commission to add the antenna, which they were approved. Just keep in mind that any, most exterior changes, ramps, plans of that nature, are going to require them to go back to H P C, should they desire to do any exterior, additional exterior renovations. The second facet is going from planning commission to city council. They'll go to city council next week for the conditional use for the radio station as well as the media space and the antenna. The third one is coming in front of here for the tower setbacks. The rule is, however tall the tower is, is how many feet it has to be set back from the property line. In this instance, the tower is fifty-nine feet tall, which means that they would have to have fifty-nine feet from the point where the tower is set up, located, to all four property lines. They meet this in three of the four property lines. The only one that they don't is along the western property line. There we go. And they are short nineteen point five feet. So the tower as located is thirty-nine and a half feet from that particular property. So they're requesting a variance of nineteen and a half feet from that particular property. Given the fact that the lot is a little bit narrower and there are some trees, vegetation, as well as the house to kind of shield the visibility of the tower from most areas, I mean, areas around that property. Staff did find hardship and is able to recommend for approval for this particular area. Any questions?
Are there any questions?
Just so I can clarify, on that drawing, it appears to me that the road itself is a little over twenty feet wide, but from the edge of the, from the center line of the road to the edge of the property, am I reading this correct? And then it's sixty-two point five feet?
Let me double check the site plan real quick.
I just wanna make sure I under, it looks like it's sixty-two feet?
Yes, yes, sir.
So even if the tower were to come down, it would not project into the road?
Um, it would project to the center line of the wall, just barely into the right way.
Okay.
Into the right way.
Right. Into, into the right of way, not into the road way?
Right, correct. Sorry for the clarification.
And that's a bit late, all the way down?
Correct.
Not cock on anything else?
Trees, hopefully not the house.
And in the opposite direction, there's no danger of it falling on them?
Right, because the other three property lines are more than fifty-nine feet. One about half a foot, the other one under.
Is the advocate here and would like to say anything?
Yeah, I guess we're the only one. I'm Paul Arandula, and this is Berta, Jay Arandula, we're at one ten West Forest Street. And, uh, we should say we had a pointer, because I, I, and I'll go over there. This is where the antenna. This is where the antenna will be located, it's at the back of the house, that's the point. So, the house extends here, there's still fifty-nine and a half feet to the property line on this side, it's seventy-five feet to the Langdale property, which is the house behind. The house is here, so, we're, we've got plenty of room anyway, it's like a hundred and fifty-six feet to, to there, so. This is the only problem, is the east, the, the east wind is here, and so, I think it says thirty-seven and a half, but to the edge of the road is another twenty feet, so it's right on the edge of the road where the, where the tower would fall to, if it did. Uh, but the, the one thing about it, the tower that we're looking at is lightweight, uh, it's, uh, going to just be swung up in place, it, uh, it's, it's just, I, I think it's six hundred pounds total for the whole tower. So, it's, uh, it's, uh, not excessively damaging, it's not like we're putting up a troop, uh, a church steeple or something where it would do fall.
What's the...
Just sort of, wait.
What's the normal way for a tower to size?
Oh, I wouldn't be able to tell you, I'm only, I'm only aware of the tower that we're, uh, that we're interested in, and then we're, we're buying. Yeah, uh, but, uh, the, we're gonna have a handicap ramp come off here off the back of the house, and I don't, I guess we're not talking about that today.
No, just the tower.
And this is the parking lot that we're adding to, so, that's, those are things that we, that we are going to do as part of construction.
The only thing we're talking about is how close is the tower to the edge of the property?
And I think I've, and I told you that.
Yes, you did. We're, we are very compartmentalized in our responsibility.
Yeah, I know, it's, I wanted to participate in that last one so bad.
I did too, I did too.
All right, are there any other questions for our advocates?
Will the tower in any way interfere in any way with reception of the surrounding neighbors for cell phone usage, or internet usage, or TV, anything?
No, uh, it's strictly FM radio, and, uh, and it's only a hundred watts. So, it, it's, uh, it's according to FCC, everything we're doing is according to the FCC regulations that have, that have been, uh, given us to, uh, the Megane State Construction program. So, there's, there's no, uh, problem with airplanes, and, and it's only a three-and-a-half-mile radius, which is pretty much in a perimeter road, so there's, uh, uh, we, they, they're taking into account any other radio stations that we, we would interfere with, all that was taken into account when we applied for the permit. So, there, it, it won't interfere at all. It is no, it's only ninety feet taller than a ham radio tower. So, it, it, and it's, it, and the frequencies, they're all different, and all the, all the frequencies are different, from radios to, but the one thing is, um, your phone has a chip that can receive FM radio, and, and one day maybe it will be activated, and you can hear our radio station on your smartphone. And we also will have EAS, emergency alert system, that, that's also required from FCC, so we will work with the police and fire and, and emergency to, to, uh, automatically look, uh, slip into, uh, emergency broadcast immediately.
But to answer the question, no. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they're compartmentalized, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Yes, Tracy?
I forgot to cite, the staff recommended for approval with one condition, and a new subject to the site plan show.
Okay. Was there any feedback for your office about this compartmentalized item?
No calls, no visitors, no emails, thank you.
Does anybody want to make a motion on this?
I'm making mention that we agree with the variance with the condition that stated by staff as to the tower location on the committed site plan.
We have a motion by Katrina with, a second by?
A second motion.
Mr. Hogan. All in favor, raise a hand. It's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Do you got my hand? All right, so, on our other business, we have the approval of the November minutes, which...
I have made one change. I neglected when I gave out doc copies to replace Mr. Strickland's name with Ms. Gretchen, since she's gonna be the one to sign. So, that is the only reason I made a change.
But I was an activist, Mr. Strickland signed this?
You wouldn't sign this one since you're here and you're active.
Okay, I guess that's best for me. What, the, the people that were here at this meeting, do they look correct to me?
Dr. Hausel said yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I would, you may, at home, yes, yes, you're correct.
Okay.
I still move that the legislature approved the subject correction being made.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Hausel with a second by Mr. McCall, that they be approved with the correction so stated. All in favor, raise a hand. It's unanimous, okay. The next thing that's on here, I must have been absent last month, um, the election of chairman and vice chairman last month, did we nominate people? Is that what we're doing?
And today it's time to actually give this stamp of approval.
Okay, so, according to last month's meeting, Chairman Strickland said that it was time to nominate a chairman and vice chairman for twenty sixteen, and open the floor to nominations. Dr. Hausel nominated Mr. Strickland for chairman and his support for vice chairman, they were being open for the nominations before it was closed. So, I believe that that's the slate we are voting on. All in favor of that slate, raise a hand. Look how high Katrina raised her hand. Okay, that's, that's, thanks a lot. Uh, because, discussion item, where are we on name badges?
I will, I'll speak for the city. Chief, um, Chief Childress is okay with providing ID something similar to what I have as an employee for the city, um, appointees. So, I will be appro, I will coordinate them as to what needs to be able to process those or provide us with IDs for my city, the city of, sorry. I don't know, anyway, what's...
I do know that there's still a special...
Is it possible when we can follow suit with the city once they have theirs?
Should, should those of us who are county appointees, one, two, three, I don't know, three of us?
Four.
Four of us?
Four.
You were back and forth, and now you're on the county side.
Back.
You were back and forth, and now you're...
I'm back on the county.
Okay, could the four, should the four of us come to a meeting and say, hey, my...
No, no. I don't like that of this.
I do think that badges need to show, reflect in some way. Counties would cover possibly both of us, but city does not. I mean, that would just be like me going as a city policeman out to the sheriff's office with authority that I have now. And so, if we are, even though appointed with the city, the badge needs to reflect somehow that we, we are representing both sides.
There will be something on there that says you are a city appointee for the El Nosa, Lous County, presenting board of appeals.
Correct.
So, it'll say to your appointee, I'll just do one.
Okay, thank you.
So, hopefully, hopefully, another line will do aside how we want to see with that. We just don't want one group and have something, not the other, just wouldn't be right.
So, about thirty-eight people.
So, hopefully, we're working on it.
Okay, because, you know, the four of us who are county appointees, we can, we can comment.
I know y'all will. You will, but, no, no, no. You communicate with me.
Okay. All right, holiday gathering?
Yes, the Grand Lous Planning Commission extended the invitation to you all to join them in their Christmas dinner at Austin. Only thing we're requesting is by December eleventh, you can send me or Jason an email to confirm, so we have a good number. Um, it is Dutch treat, but, um, we would love to help you.
All righty. Is there any other business on this fine December day?
Tracy, one more thing, and this is my, we talked about the schedule, um, the schedule for next year, however, I'm inclined to mention that we need to actually vote on it and adopt it, so...
Okay, so, at your place, I believe you have the schedule, January fifth, between us, all these five folks will be here then.
The only alterations are like we talked about last month, meeting July the twelfth because that first Tuesday was close to the fore, and then moving September thirteenth because the first Tuesday fell the day after Lincoln. But other than that, we're gonna be on the first Tuesday.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second?
Okay, you have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise a hand. Okay. All right, we are finished, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sort of be dreaming, you gotta pay attention every second.
Thank you.